I'd like to call this meeting of the Quincy City Council Finance Committee to order and ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor DeBonner.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Counselor Yang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Chairman Phelan.
Present.
Seven members, we have a quorum.
Seven members, we have a quorum. I'm going to first read the open meeting law into the record. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or transmit the meeting throughout any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed and acknowledged permissible. Okay. With that, we're going to, we have one item before us. It's on the State Revolving Fund for Sewer Water and Drain Systems Improvement, 2023-036. I'd ask Commissioner Grazioso to come up and give an explanation on it.
Sure. Good evening. The mayor with this body's approval has established an aggressive plan to improve our neighborhood and associate infrastructure with programmatic year-to-year advancements. The past few years, including this coming construction season, with the council's approval, DPW will have repaired or improved 272 roadways totaling 53 miles, over 1,200 spot repairs on roadways, more than 87 miles of sidewalks. We replaced water mains in 166 roadways with almost 32 miles of new pipe and repaired and lined sewers in over 350 roadways totaling over 41 miles of sewer improvements, which we have reported to the EPA as part of our consent decree. Bottom line is that every neighborhood in our city has received improvements, and with this council's support, we will continue to see DPW's daily activities to improve our infrastructure. Each neighborhood will continue to benefit. As the city continues to advance our improvements, tonight, we are requesting a loan authorization to receive $10 million from the state of Massachusetts through the State Revolving Fund, SRF Loan Program for sewer construction work in the summer of 2024. State program applications are approved one year in advance, so the city will need to approve the borrowing by June 30th of this year in order to have the funds for summer construction of 2024. The SRF loan has several financial benefits, including principal forgiveness of over $600,000 and an opportunity to reduce the 2% loan rate down to 1.5%, thus saving another half million dollars in interest payments. Tonight, I am joined by Joe Shea from Granite City Partners. We have a brief presentation to review some of the technical details and the financial structure of the requested loans. Thank you, and we will be available for questions following the presentation. The first slide you see is our Quincy Roads and Infrastructure. Most of you have seen this before, but it just lays out what we have in front of us. 1,035 roadways totaling 257 miles, 304 miles of sidewalks, 240 miles of water main, 208 miles of sewers, 150 miles of drainage system, and 188 outfalls. And we have dozens of pumping stations, water tanks, and fixed assets. As part of our rolling CIP improvements every year, the mayor's aggressive investment plan with the support of the city council is improving neighborhoods quickly in a programmatic year-to-year advancement. The asset management approach to coordinate roads, water, sewers, and drains balances replacements with maintenance strategies to extend the life of our assets. Roadways and water mains are funded in an omnibus multi-year approvals. That's the CIP that you people approved. Most recent was the spring of 2021. Sewers and stormwater MS4 are funded annually based upon annual assessments. The next chart you'll see is, it's just a list of all the work we've done since 2017. The top half of the top graph will show you roadways, sidewalks, water main replacement, sewer lining, and sewer open cuts in mileage. And the bottom half of the graph will show you those years by year with the total number of roadways we've completed for all of those water sewer paving. This is a map of everything we've completed, and what you see is everything in red is the roads we've paved. Everything in yellow with a red line around it is a road we've paved, but we've also put a water main in it, a new water main. And anything within those charts you see in green is all the sewer lining we've completed and sewer open cuts. That coincides with the number of roadways we've completed on the chart before, the graph before this one. This is also reflected, this is in the larger map, as you can see, shows all the work we've completed. This is what I have here, and I'm kind of, you can't see it, but everything is red is all the paving we've done, the 268 roads in the last five or six years. I'm very proud of that chart right there. Benefits of sewer rehab program is a reduction in infiltration and inflow, II, which can reduce cost for treatment, environmental and water quality improvements, sewer system evaluations completed every three years, and this creates a rolling priority list for us. It reduces reactive costs associated with sewer collapses and sewer overflows. And we can coordinate priorities for efficiencies in utility management and roadway construction. So what we try to do when we do a roadway, we look at everything. Again, we look at our sewer, water, drainage, before we pave, and gas. The next slide is our sewer rehabilitation areas, and this is based upon our U.S. EPA compliance agreements we've made with them. At this time, I would turn this over to Joe Shea, and he can continue to talk through this presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I am Joseph Shea, one of the managing members of Granite City Partners, an engineering and real estate firm right here in downtown Quincy. Thank you for having me this evening. As the commissioner had indicated, the city has continued the aggressive rehabilitation of its water quality assets. You've seen me in January and then again last month over water quality improvements and over the EPA's consent decree. The slide the commissioner has pivoted on here is the sewer rehabilitation areas where the city of Quincy has been split up into five areas in accordance with our agreement with the EPA. The blue areas or light blue areas, hopefully that show up on the screen for the at-home viewer, are areas that have already been assessed. They've already been evaluated for sewer repairs. Many of those areas have already had sewer repairs done in them, and the drainage and outfall repairs continue to be underway. This evening before you is a loan authorization for a state revolving low-interest loan for the orange areas. And the orange neighborhoods are on this graphic. There may be a very obvious question as to why is the city not just split up into the six wards? Or why is it just not split up into contiguous areas if you have to split it into five sections? And the reason is because the sections are prioritized based upon the age of the sewer or the impact to its water bodies, which is why for the past four years, we've been very aggressive along many of the beaches, why we've been trying to deal with sewers that may be adjacent to our town brooks and our furnace brook. We are now moving into the third phase, which still is significantly along the coast, but has other neighborhoods that we know through our investigation over the last decade has some impacts. The Montclair Bog, for example, the grid of neighborhoods around the bog are very flat pipes, very flat sewers. We want to make sure that even though the bog is not a bathing beach, we still need to make sure that our sewers and drains around that area are competent, are adequately performing, and are not allowing any wastewater to seep into the drainage system. So the sewer rehabilitation areas that we are focusing on, this $10 million on, are generally described on this slide. It represents about 20% of the city. And over the course of the next year, as the commissioner had indicated, this is construction funding for the summer of 2024. The specific streets, the specific sewers, the specific areas will be designed over the course of this summer and fall. The funding for that design work is already in place. It was approved by this body as part of Massachusetts Water Resource Association, MWRA, 0% loan during one of our visits in the fall. So that design is ready to be underway. This coming spring, after the design is done, in the spring of 2024, we'd be back before this body to present the specific streets that the commissioner will be adding to his graphics as green lines, red lines, and yellow lines. One of the benefits of the EPA's program to use water quality and age of sewer as a driver is every year, we touch every corner of the city. It's not that the peninsulas get all the money for a couple of years and we work our way to the hills of West Quincy. We really are all over the city. It's a great citywide benefit. It also adds a lot of complexity because we are in almost every single neighborhood and then overlaying the water mains as the commissioner described, the roadway paving, sidewalks as the commissioner described. And then we also do coordinate with National Grid on their gas main work. But these neighborhoods are the ones that are targeted for summer of 2024 construction, paid for by this loan. The funding structure for the loan is that the MWRA Infiltration and Inflow Program loan previously approved will be used for the design. This is purely construction money for publicly bid projects. We believe and estimate that it will equate to sewer improvements in about 150 roads. That should equate to about 30 miles of lining. And then we also expect to do two to three miles of excavation sewer repairs. When a sewer has collapsed, we have no choice but to excavate it. The benefit is it makes the sewer brand-new and competent. The disadvantage is we now need to repave that road. We have to deal with trench restoration. It is much more impactful than sewer lining. So we do our best to guide as much work into sewer lining, which is a trenchless technology, where the sewer becomes competent, becomes tight, it does not leak, but we don't need to dig up all the roads, especially with the rate that this body has authorized paving roads. We don't want to dig up all these newly paved roads to address sewers. Some highlights of the State Revolving Fund loan program is on the $10 million loan. It's a 20-year loan. It's budgeted at a 2% interest rate, but Quincy has actually granted a 6.6% principal forgiveness, which means right off the bat, Quincy does not pay back $660,000 of the loan. Then further, Quincy is a housing choice community, so Quincy gets an additional half a percent reduction if you approve this loan, so it goes from 2% to 1.5%. That equates to another $580,000 in interest payments that the city will not need to pay with this competitively won loan through the state of Massachusetts. One thing that we always want to be clear about when we talk about water and sewer is the repayment of these loans comes from the sewer rates, not the general tax base. So when people pay their water and sewer bill, whether it's monthly or quarterly, you pay into a capital improvement component or debt service payment. So this will come out of the water and sewer bills, not the general tax rate. As an engineer, I always like to put spreadsheets into every presentation. Hopefully, this can be read at home, but this is a breakdown of the debt service on the $10 million. You'll notice that the debt service repayments start in 2026. The way the state loans work is you get the money in 2024 and start the construction, but you don't make the first payback until fiscal year '26. So it's been appropriately pushed out. The column on the left is debt service loan at 2%, what the annual cost would be. The center column is the debt service loan at 1.5%, which is what Quincy will be granted if they approve this loan by June 30th. And then there's the annual difference. You save about $30,000 a year, which equates to about $580,000 over the life of the loan. For people who don't like spreadsheets, what that looks like on a graph is this is the current sewer enterprise debt service until 2045, and the impacts of the 1.5% loan are overlaid on it. So you see the spike in 2026 when this loan makes its initial payments, and then it continues to drop as the city continues to retire previous loans that have either hit their 10- or 20-year mark, going back quite a bit now. With that, the commissioner and I would be happy to answer any questions that the counselors may have, and I'll turn the microphone back over to Commissioner Grazioso. Thank you very much.
Right now, I'll open it up to the city councilors. President DeBonner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments, really, Commissioner. Just overall, looking back, I get you gave a little package here of roads and infrastructures, and you went back to 2017. I was thinking back when I got on first onto the council in 2016. I know the mayor and the administration came in front of us with the capital improvement plan, an entire master plan for the entire city. And as you can see, we've appropriated a lot of funding in this particular area of roads, sidewalks, infrastructure. I would probably say it's probably closer to $150 million with this body since the 17, give or take some millions. But you've done a fantastic job since you've taken over as commissioner. I know some of the biggest complaints that I got back in 16, and even when I was on the school committee in 14 and 15, was our roads were in disarray and our roads and our sidewalks were treacherous out there. And what we did is we came with a plan, came in front of the council, we worked together collaboratively. We worked together with the ward counselors and the at-large counselors to figure out a plan to attack the city. And here we are in 2023 with a lot of roads and sidewalks and infrastructures of sewers and water mains. And you combining the capital improvement funding and these different appropriations of state revolving fund loans that are in front of us tonight, along with Chapter 90 funding, you've tailored different funds to push it together and make it work. As I drive through the city today, it's very different than when we were driving through it in 16 before this really rolled out with the capital improvement plan and having different pockets of the city be done. There's not a ward, there's not an area, there's not a neighborhood that I don't see some type of work being done or have been done between all this different packages that you have in front of us tonight. So just a couple of comments, just basically saying thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Every time I see you, Al, I'm asking you, how we doing out there? He goes, we're busy. I know you're attacking right now mostly the peninsulas. I see a lot of stuff done on the, obviously, up against the water in Phase 3, I guess I could see. Is there any particular area after this where you see we need improvement in? Is there an area that you're like, okay, we can't fit it in this time, but we need to get into it next time?
As far as the sewer work, based on this?
Yes.
Well, I think the list you have is pretty extensive. I think we're looking at that right now into the Phase 3 section, which includes, pretty much touches most of the city in different areas. And when we hit, we'll be before this body again, and when we finish this, and we'll be looking at the next phase.
On the subject of, you have a lot of roads and sidewalks and CIP in here. Of the $100 million that we've approved for you and your department, where do you think you've spent so far of that $100 million?
I'll have to take a good look at that. This year is very aggressive. We're probably spending between water and paving this year, we're probably spending $35 million this year alone. We probably, I would say, $40 to $50 million left.
Okay.
Next year, we'll be attacking a lot of our mains. We have money set aside for main roads. That's on our plan next year, trying to finish up some of the neighborhood roads that don't need water mains next year. So we still have a few years left. We still have a number of roads that are complete, but I think we're definitely ahead of schedule.
Can you just explain to the public just a little bit about the water mains and how much time you need when you do a water main, the trenches? How long does it take to really get to the paving of the road? Because you're tearing up, obviously, to get underneath in the infrastructure. Can you talk a little bit about why some of the roads around the city are kind of, I could say, lumpy? They're not, just kind of explain to the public a little bit about, I do get the question a lot.
We look at a road that needs to be paved. We look at the pavement condition index, and then we take a look and we see, you know, the age of the water main. We have some water mains that are still well over 100 years old. And we look at the sewer. We look, and then we talk to National Grid to see if they need gas. So before we touch a road, we want to replace the infrastructure underneath. So generally, we try to do the water and the gas in the same year. If we have to line the sewer, we can do that because it's trenchless, pretty much. We can do that anytime. But we like to have the trenches. Like, for instance, this summer, we do a water main and gas. We like the trenches to settle over the winter for proper compaction, and then we'll go back next year and pave that road.
So it'll be a 12-month turnover?
And it is very disruptive to the residents. We understand that. But, you know, we try to do, to get the best job done, it's better to try to, especially when you're replacing a water main, you know, because the trench is deep, to try to wait for those trenches to settle.
Well, for me, especially if it's an old water main, we don't want that person. And then it's disastrous to get back into that and fix it, and now you're the reactive stage rather than the proactive stage. So, you know, I thank you for all your work you've done, Joe Shea. Thank you for coming in today as well. I'd like to make a motion to approve this appropriation if I could.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second and on the motion too, Judge.
And on the motion, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Phelan. Al, good evening.
Good evening, Counselor.
Yeah, you've done a great job. I mean, Ward 1, we've got so much done down there in all the neighborhoods, spread out. And as Counselor DeBonner just indicated, the amount of due diligence in regards to, you know, it seems like 1894 was a good year for water mains. Every time I ask you guys, that's what you give me, I mean, that's the answer. It's 1894, we can't do it right now. But...
It's actually a pretty good pipe.
Yeah, that was a good year for pipes. But tremendous job on everything. I got a couple of questions about the lining. When you're lining, and I know that was Woodard and Curran, and I know maybe Joe Shea's group now, but that must save us. Have we ever calculated how much, if we didn't have that lining procedure that goes on, the money that would be saved, the money that is saved by not tearing up the street if you have a pipe that, let's say, must be fairly good, that can handle the lining process? We've never gone down that road, but I'd love to see that number because I think the savings on lining the pipes...
It's a tremendous savings because, you know, especially with a sewer, you have to go down, what, five or six feet anyways, dig down for sewer trench. It's hard work, it's deep, the road is trash afterwards.
Right. And a lot of folks, you know, they ask all of us, you know, like, you know, what's happening on my street? And you try to get out the word. I know that Joe's been real good when there's a lining going on in Ward 1, along with you guys, with notification if we're doing a water main or we're doing paving anywhere. But that always, that kind of piqued my interest on how many, you know, we've done, we've lined, and how much money we've saved if we were ever digging up the streets all the time to get to these pipes and we didn't have the ability to pull that off. You know, that's a great asset in regards to that. The other question, I looked at the map a little bit, and the orange areas were the target areas, and I'm taking a good look at Ward 1. When you talk about, it looks like the end of Germantown, right? How does that work with the housing authority? Is that all us, is that Quincy streets, Quincy pipes? Do we have to coordinate that? How does that work down there?
We do that work.
You do that work? Do they get involved at all?
No, I mean, there are pipes. It's, you know, our infrastructure under those, you know, the same as if it's a private way, if there's infrastructure, we have to repair it.
Right, because I know we don't have any streets. It's just at the end of Germantown. I know you're probably still doing your due diligence, but I'd be interested in the streets that we hit. It looked like a substantial amount down there we were going to go after, if the orange is any indication of that. And I look at the streets that we're doing now. There are a lot of streets that you and I have banted back and forth on, on different things, but, you know, the Rock Island Road area, the neighbors are more than pleased with Huntress and Hoopa that hasn't seen paving in a long time. The road was done right. I think the pitch of the road was done right. That really was a big deal, and you got that on here. And I'm glad to see Lennox and Stoughton. It seemed like Stoughton was, work was done on Stoughton a while ago, and I'm glad Stoughton's on there and Lennox. Lennox is one of those streets, I don't know if it needs a water main or not, but it's pretty...
Stoughton does.
How about Lennox, Al? Is that just a pave?
I'll have to check on that.
Yeah. And then portions of Adam Shore, but I know you've done a lot in Adam Shore and a lot in Merrymount also, and the folks are real pleased. The streets that can end up with the cement sidewalks and curbs, you know, in regards to the width of the street, I think the judgment calls on all of them, you know, have been right on. You know, I didn't think we were going to get away with Mirzav, but it came out beautiful. I thought that was going to be a little bit tight, but it came out beautiful, so. And it's a program where we, you know, we end up with the, you know, with the loan, but the discounts, the percentage rates to save us the 660 and then not pay the 580 in interest and whatever, it's a great program to be involved with. So thanks to everybody, Larry, everybody down there, you guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other councilors? Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Counsel Phelan. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, and I appreciate all, as always, all the work that's being done, and it's your hard quest to not see it being done throughout neighborhoods, and it's a lot of work. I just, one quick question, and Joe, I appreciate your, it says Woodward and Curran, do we still work with Woodward and Curran too?
Yeah, it's one of our engineering firms.
I'm just asking because sometimes, because I know you were with Woodward and Curran, I'm not sure, like, you're up here a lot representing, and I just want to make sure, I just didn't know if we continue to work with them or not, or are they part of the equation? If not, I was just curious about that, not to say that...
Yeah, Woodward and Curran and Tetra Tech are our sewer engineers.
Okay. Yeah, and again, because I know that you do a lot of different things, Joe, I just was trying to make sure I was understanding, because I think we just did another presentation and we had Woodward and Curran here, so it's hard to keep up with who's doing what for what projects.
Joe has been an asset helping us in doing applications to help us get these loans and these...
Yeah.
Tremendous asset for us in that regard.
It was a long time for us to get used to the fact that you weren't with Woodward and Curran either. So it's not, you certainly have, you have those skills that come there, but it's just, it's the crossover that I'm trying to understand what's happening here. And then the other question I had, I know that this is a loan that we're taking out, and I get the debt, which is only for the $10 million that we're talking about, but is there other loans that we've taken out as well, other than this particular $10 million loan that we're looking at? Because it's the combined borrowing that we should be looking at, not just this particular one?
Yeah, I mean, as you see that debt chart, that includes anything we've borrowed today.
So the $10 million, it's not just, so that says including impacts of $10 million, so that's everything?
That's... That's, that's entire...
It's a little confused because it's not giving us the total amount that's, that's been borrowed, it's just talking, including the 10 million. So it would be helpful if we knew exactly the amount that's being borrowed to kind of really understand this chart. Otherwise, this is, this chart doesn't really represent, it's hard to understand the representation of that. And then finally, I know that it's going to be paid for, and the, the interest rate is very low, and, and that's incredible, and that's great. And we're, we're also having the, the forgiveness of the 600, or 6, I forget the amount, $640,000 principal forgiveness, approximately. And it's going to be paid for the sewer, from the sewer enterprise fund. And that's, that's what we collect when we pay our water bills, a piece of that goes in that. So there's a chance, every time we borrow, there's a chance that our water bill potentially will go up, that will help pay for this, this bond, correct?
Yeah, as you, as you will see, you know, when, when the city budget comes out, you'll see the debt service payment within the budget, what that is.
I just want to make sure people understand that and home to it, just because we say, you know, it's, there's no general tax rate, it doesn't impact the general tax rate, but it does, it does, in fact, this borrowing, although low, will affect your water rate. But it's important that we do this work. And then I'm just going to ask one other question, and I appreciate the fact that this interest rate is really low. How much, if any, have we got, have we used for ARPA funds, both whether it's the money that we received in directly to the city, or are we going after any of that money that's coming in through Norfolk County for some of the, some of the work we're doing here in Quincy?
Not for this type of work.
No, I just, or any work, any of the work, not just the work that's presented to us? Have we done, have we used it for any of the work, or do we have any money identify, any roads, anything that we have identified?
I haven't used any at DPW. As far as I know, I'd have to check, but we have not used any of those funds for, we're primarily using the CIP funds that...
No, I understand, yeah. And the reason why I'm asking that, because I think there's also funds coming in through the Norfolk County that you can borrow to. I know cities and towns are going after that money as well. And I'm just asking because it's just another avenue, and I'm just curious if that's, if we've identified anything there.
Sure, Joe.
And I understand this is a low interest, and trust me, this is, you know, 1.5% over 20 years is, is a great rate.
That is correct. Just one point of clarity, there was, through county money, there was $4 million in sewer and water main work to be done along the shipyard.
Yep.
So that came through the county's funds for ARPA, that was used for water and sewer.
That's what I thought, I thought there was somebody that came, but so, but other than that, there's been no other, no other funds that have come into Quincy.
Not that I'm aware of, but I do, I'm aware of that force, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, but the $46 million that did come into Quincy, we could have used some of that for water sewers and rehabilitation for any of those things, but we didn't. And I just, I just clarify that, it's just another opportunity to be able to just highlight some of the things that we're not using. But at the same time, this, this rate that we're getting and what we're going to be able to do with it is incredible. And I do, I do value the work that's being done, and this is by no means by saying that I'm not valuing what's happening. It's just that, like, looking at all the avenues that we can do. Because in the end, at the end of the day, although it may not be your home taxes, your real estate taxes that are paying it, will be your water taxes that people are paying additional money for. And that's still hitting our, our constituents at home, but this work has to be done as well. Last question, does this have, does this help our, the fine that we had for the DEP, that the, the environmental impact that we, that we also...
Absolutely.
So all of this is playing an equation for that, too?
All does, and I just, and I, we just sent in our fourth, yeah, our fourth report on our consent decree to the EPA. And so far, so good, they're happy with everything we've done.
Yeah.
We just submitted at the end of April.
And they should be, because, you know, there's a lot of work that's being done. I know it's a lot more work on our end, and I know with the, the way we're going about pulling those reports and showing the work that's being done, it's, I think it's probably highlighting some of the things we're doing. Unfortunately, we didn't have those kind of reporting in place several years ago. So, all in all, I mean, you know, I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of doing anything that's going to be able to help rehabilitate our water and sewer lines and our roads, everything that we're doing in Quincy. Again, I just get concerned, even with the 1.5%, when it's a borrowing, anytime we have to borrow money when we could have been using something that we were gifted, but we didn't have that opportunity to do that. But thank you very much for the presentation, and I appreciate the work that, that Mr. Shea does, and I'm glad, I just, again, Woodward and Curran, I was like, they were just here? Were they just here? I can't remember, there's so many people that come before us, and so, and I feel like, Joe, you're always an equation, so it's, it's a, it's a good thing, because you have the stability for that. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, do I, do I have any other counselors liking to speak on the matter? Seeing none. I have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to do this by a voice vote, to, to make a positive report out of committee to the City Council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And with no other business before the City Council finance, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Seeing none.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Quincy City Council meet on Monday, May 1st, 2023. It is now 7:06 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane.
Yes, President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Phelan.
President.
President DeBarna.
President.
Eight members.
Eight members in the, in the, we have a quorum. Please stand if you can. If we can get a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number 1, 2023-043, an order, a home rule petition, an act authorizing the appointment of retired firefighters for a special firefighters in the city of Quincy.
Counselors, this is in front of you. Do I have a motion? Can anyone entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, and on the motion, I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Phelan. What's that?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, do you want to speak? You want to speak on, or you want to approve? You want to speak?
No, I'm going to make a motion to approve, and I'd like to speak.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions.
Okay, so motion made by Counsel McCarthy to approve, and then Counsel Phelan for a second. And on, on the discussion, I'm going to go to, you have the floor. Go right ahead, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I went through this, I'm just, want to make sure, maybe this is a Mr. Walker question, but it looks like it's just for fire details, not to be brought on or brought back if you're shorthanded at a firehouse. And I see that a physical has been performed and, you know, swearing in by the city clerk, but my, my, my big question was the details versus the on-the-job. I just want to make sure I'm reading that right. It looks like it's all fire details.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Walker, which I probably should have opened it up right to you, but go right ahead.
Mr. President, that, that is correct, Counselor. This is just for details. This is the same authority that the police department has, the police chief has, relative to police details, and through some conversations with the fire chief, Solicitor Timmons, members of the local, everyone feels that this is appropriate path forward.
And one other, just...
Go right ahead, Mr. McCa, uh, Counsel McCarthy.
Information, the retirement age for fire, 65? What's that?
So the question is, is the retirement age for firefighters?
That's correct, Counsel. I believe that is accurate.
Did Janet have the answer? You can find out, I just want to make sure I, I get an age of when someone's going to retire and come back. I didn't know if it was any, I think police was 65.
65 for police.
I think, I just wanted to see if fire was, you know, younger or all the same. That's all I had. And I can, we can catch up with that answer.
Okay, sounds good. Any of the counselors, I'm going to, Counsel Liang, you have the floor, go right ahead.
I'd said, I'm just curious as to why this came up, if there's any specific reason or thought process behind it.
I'm going to defer to the executive, to the secretary, Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. President, Counsel, I don't think there's any one specific thing. I think over the course of the last several years, there have been more private details required of our fire department. And the more there are, the harder they become to fill. People are busy, they don't want to fill them. The police department has been the, the same issue, really, to a greater extent, just because the amount of work that's going on in town, there's just so much detail work out there, the police. We've had a hard time filling all the essential details. I know I've seen retired Captain Dugan out of Merrymount Parkway at least three times every week for the last month or so, so he's picking up some details on, on that project. But this would just give the fire department the same authority to bring some folks back, especially on the younger end of that retirement age that could be working private details to, to fill some of the gaps.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it makes sense, you know, if you think about it. I know that we've talked in the last couple of budget years, too, where, you know, the larger that the city is getting, the more they're getting stretched thin, and we certainly don't want to exhaust any of these folks out. They do a great job, and the folks that are retired already know the city, they know the process, they know how we work, and so, who better than them versus going out to other cities and towns when we need help? But again, I didn't want to make any assumptions and just that I'd ask. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other council members? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you very much. I just have a quick question, and it's just, it's, it's, it's like, we know the police details, like, when you see them on the corners of the street or detail, but what are, just for me to understand some of, I know, like, if you have a building that does not have fire alarms, you would have a fire detail, but I don't know what some of the other kind of examples of that would be, and it's, it's just mostly because I don't know.
Sure, off the top of my head, Counselor, construction-related details, overnights in some cases, depending on the setup of the construction site, if there's demolition. Demolition is a big topic relative to a fire detail needing a detail on scene. Major public events, the events at the stadium, the Free Jax, because there's open cooking going on, there's a requirement to have a fire detail for those who are having more of those kinds of events. Things like that.
And then just, to be specific, so like, when you say a fire detail, is it a person or is it apparatus? Is it just, I just, again...
It is a person, and generally, it is a person and an officer, depending on the scope, but it is always a person, a firefighter. And there are events, such as the major public events, stadium events, that require an officer on duty and a firefighter. And then that, that actually grows depending on the amount of people that you're expected to have at a certain event.
And then just, the last question I have that is, like, because I know most, a lot of our fire are, and I, maybe even the police, for medical emergencies, do they, do they help in something like that, too?
Of course.
I just, I just, so that's the benefit, too, in a situation like that as well, I mean...
Correct. In this day and age, most of our firefighters, especially at these public events, almost all of our firefighters are, they're all EMT trained and a majority, I believe, are paramedic trained at this point in time.
Yeah. So that was, that just, that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a note before the vote, I will need to abstain from this as it's a home rule petition, given my day job with the Massachusetts State Senate. That's all. Thank you.
With a point of privilege, I'd just like to ask the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker, if I could, is Chief, firefighter chief Joe Jackson okay with this?
This, through you, Mr. President, this was actually his idea.
Okay. And then firefighter local 792?
100% on board, sir.
Okay, President Bowes in the, in the group?
Absolutely.
Okay. That is, that is all my questions I have. As long as they're okay with it, I'm okay with it. Any other counselors? So we have a motion made to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, we have a seconded by Counsel Phelan. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBarna.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, please.
Number 2, 2023-044, an ordinance amending municipal code, Chapter 270, Sewer and Water, Section 2, payments.
I'd like to recognize Counsel McCarthy, if I could. On this ordinance, 2023-044?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion, we have to refer this, okay. We have to advertise this, if I could?
Yes.
Yes. Because it needs to be advertised, and it needs to be put into ordinance.
You got to put it in the committee?
If you could, if you're, so you want to make the motion to...
Motion to put it into ordinance.
Motion to approve, a, a motion to put it into ordinance and also to advertise for us. To have a second, seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries and put into ordinance committee and to also advertise. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 3, 2023-045, a gift for $900 from various donors for deer.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane. Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBarna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Is that it for our agenda items, Madam Clerk?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. We need to scoop, skip the approval of previous minutes, they're not ready for tonight, so we're going to move on to communication and reports from mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Counselors? Unfinished business proceeding in preceding meeting. Reports of committees. I'd like to recognize Chairman Phelan. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we held a meeting on the appropriation of $10 million from the state revolving loan account for sewer and drainage improvements. At this time, I'm not going to be bringing it out of committee. It still hasn't, the council meetings were so close together that we still have some days it needs to be advertised. So I will plan on bringing that out at the meeting on the, on, I believe it's the 15th.
15th.
We'll bring it out that Monday for a vote at the regular council meeting. But we had a meeting, there was an affirmative, positive vote from the, from the Finance